Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tole Martz, call the Services Safety and Parks September 30th City Council Meeting to order. Public comment, there are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation in council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address council at this time. We don't, we have no members of the public in person, but they can certainly join us virtually. Those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you are joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I will wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their virtual hand. Clerk?
Chair Martz, we have no virtual attendees.
What? As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to city council isiquawawa.gov. Next up, let me go to my meeting. Next up, we have approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, moved to adopt in July minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Joe, seconded by Councilmember De Michelle. Any discussion hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries three to zero. Agenda items, we have one agenda item this evening, COM 0069 School Zone Speed Camera with Dale Markey Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator. Dale, take it away.
Good evening, Council Committee members. My name is Dale Markey Crimp. I'm Assistant to the City Administrator, and I am glad to be here this evening with you. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to return here to the Services Safety and Parks Committee to present the findings of the vendor analysis for potential new school zone speed camera locations, to present the administration's analysis, proposal, and rationale for a new location at Issaquah Valley Elementary School, and to obtain council committee recommendation on the administration's proposal. Specifically, the administration is requesting that the members of the Services Safety and Parks Committee provide the following direction: Review the administration's proposal to add a new school zone safety camera location at Issaquah Valley Elementary School on Newport Way Northwest, and provide direction on the administration's proposal to sign a contract amendment with our current vendor, Vera Mobility, to install and operate two cameras on Newport Way Northwest. A little bit of background before we get to that direction, though. The city's first school zone location was launched in 2008 on Second Avenue near Issaquah High School and Issaquah Middle School. The city has considered additional locations in the past, but lacked, at the time, lacked evidence to demonstrate either a true safety concern or the financial viability of those potential locations. In May of this year, at the committee meeting, the police chief, Paul Schwan, presented information about red light photo enforcement cameras, and the administration recommended a new school zone location on Newport Way Northwest near Issaquah Valley Elementary School. At the time, the council committee directed the administration to move forward with a vendor study, so specifically to reach out to our current vendor of our school zone safety camera, and look into potential school zone locations, two listed here on the screen, Newport Way Northwest, which was recommended by the administration, and also Northeast Park Drive near Grand Ridge Elementary School, which was at the request of the committee. And also to look into red light violation cameras at these six intersections listed here. And as you can see in the packet information, Vera Mobility, our vendor, looked into not just one camera at those locations, but possible different directions at each of those intersections. Also, I think it's valuable to reiterate at this meeting that Talis Drive was previously considered as a potential location for a school zone camera, but a study that was done by the school district indicated that the incidence of speeding and the rate of speed on Talis Drive did not warrant a school zone camera. I want to first talk about the red light photo enforcement study. All directions at all six intersections, in some case, those are four directions, and in some case they are two, were studied as part of Vera Mobility's study. They looked, the analysis which is in your packet, I believe it's Attachment A, indicates that all locations would, at maturity, which is about 18 months into a program, lead to about one, at least one violation a day, and at the most dangerous or the busiest intersections, up to seven violations per day, and that's at southbound West Lake, Semamish, and 56th Street. However, Attachment B in your packet, which shares the financial analysis that the city did, indicates that even before considering potential revenue restrictions on a new red light photo enforcement program, those, none of those sites net out to positive net revenues. So we actually would not even be able to cover the costs of operating new cameras. We looked at a number of different options. We looked at what if we just install at the one busiest, most dangerous intersection? That did not net out net revenue. We looked at what about economy of scale? What if we put one in everywhere? That also doesn't end up with net revenues, even in the first year of the program. Therefore, at this time, the administration does not recommend a red light, red light photo enforcement program. Let's, however, take a look at the school zone safety. Vera Mobility conducted a second study on two potential school zone locations. They did this study between September 3rd and 6th. This study was done much later than the red light photo enforcement, because we needed to wait for school to be in session and the cameras to be blinking, so that we'd have a good and accurate idea of who's still speeding, potentially driving in a dangerous way when the lights are flashing. Unlike the red light report, and as was mentioned in the packet today, this study did not provide traffic violations at maturity. And it is very difficult for even Vera, which collects a lot of data, to predict travel on stretches of road. And so this actually provided a point in time count. So you saw, this was the incident of, incidence of traffic between September 3rd and 6th. These are the potential violations, meaning folks that are traveling at 26 miles an hour or above during school zone hours, but they cannot necessarily predict out, this is what will happen in 18 months if you install a, if you install a ticketing mechanism here. As you could see from the data, and as you can see on the screen here, both locations had a high incidence of speeding at 26 mile an hour or above during school zone hours. However, we figured we needed further analysis to really determine what the violations at maturity might look like, and therefore whether a camera enforcement program would be the most appropriate intervention to curb dangerous behavior. In order to do this, we made some assumptions about both revenue and expenditures that these programs would net. The following assumptions are about, specifically about revenue. So violations in this report are likely inflated due to a couple reasons. One, they are violations at the beginning of a school year. We can imagine over the course of the school year, as people become more familiar with the lights flashing, they will likely slow down. We made the assumption that even without ticketing, we would expect to see violations go down about 10% over the course of this year, simply by becoming familiar with the flashing light and the fact that school is back in session. We also assumed that drivers will be responsive to noticing and warning tickets early in the program, and that violations will probably stabilize pretty quickly within the first six to eight months. And we based that off of data we have from our current speed zone camera, and knowing that there had been a very dramatic bump at the beginning, and that bump in tickets and violations tapered fairly quickly. And so we assume that about another 30 to 40% reduction in actual violations due to both warnings and getting those first tickets that you pay for. We also think that although there will be some additional corrective behavior, that Newport Way Northwest will experience less dramatic reduction due to the high volume of pass-through traffic that that road in particular experiences. And that Grand Ridge Elementary, so northwest, Northeast Park Drive, will experience a more dramatic drop in violations due to the nature of traffic being neighborhood or more internal city traffic. Folks will get that first ticket, and they will really quickly change their behavior, whereas on Newport Way Northwest, someone might get a ticket passing through, but because they're not driving that stretch of road every day, it might take longer to correct their behavior. Or they might simply forget and then realize again as they're driving. We still, in both situations, expect that the cameras will lead to a change in behavior. It's just where will that change happen more quickly? And then I guess the next question becomes, then is a camera program with a five-year lease the appropriate intervention? And the last assumption here that we think is important to name, we assume that about 50% of tickets will be paid. That might seem low, but that is, given our current program, that's about the pay rate on tickets currently.
I believe Deputy Council President has a question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and just a quick question. That assumption was included in our revenue projections, is that correct?
It is, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask the, this assumption about Grand Ridge quicker to change as there's no pass-through traffic in this neighborhood, did that hold true for the cameras on Second Avenue?
Second Avenue experiences still a fair amount of pass-through traffic, not, not to the extent that Newport Way Northwest does, is that it's a ma, it's a major pass-through avoider, but there, it is a through road. You can drive all the way through. And so we use some of the same assumptions on, actually on Newport Way in terms of drop-off, rather than on Northeast Park.
Okay, thank you.
Let's talk about expenditure assumptions. So in order to know whether a school zone camera system is a financially viable intervention, we also made the following expenditure assumptions with this analysis. One is not an assumption, it is a piece of knowledge, but the annual cost of a camera lease is $57,000 per year. The monthly ticket overage fee is $5 per tiffet, ticket, for any tickets over 800, the monthly allowance. The annual cost of police personnel to process violations is $195,000 in salary and benefits for a full-time or limited-term employee with an annual 4% cost of living adjustment, and the annual cost of a court, of a court personnel to administer violation payments is $145,000 in salary and benefits for a full-time or limited-term employee, with, again, an annual 4% cost of living adjustment. As you can see here, and I'll show it in a couple of different ways, so this is the table, but we'll also look at it in a chart as well. And Attachment D in your packet provides a much more detailed revenue and expenditure analysis. This is just sort of the net revenue assumption, net revenue calculus by year for each potential camera in these two locations. So over its five-year lease life, cameras on Newport Way are estimated to net more revenue, even while effectively reducing dangerous driving from the current levels. Revenues are expected to be higher, and therefore we can be more confident that they will not only cover the program costs, but provide revenues that can then be used for transportation and traffic improvements, which is what our additional revenues are used for currently in our Second Avenue camera. Shown another way, this is just a simple chart of that same data. While we, while the current violation predictions indicate comparable dangerous behavior in both locations, we believe that speeding on Northeast Park will be more quickly impacted by any intervention, and that intervention, while it could be a camera, could also be a patrol officer, given the nature of that road terminating in a roundabout and then circling back down. So you might be asking, what about a third location? I know I was asking that, especially given that speeding is a significant issue in both locations, as demonstrated by the study. This past legislative session, HB 2384, which went into effect on June 6th of this year, provides cities an expanded authority to use automated traffic cameras. However, it also provides more restrictions on how those revenues collected can be used. Specifically, I think it's important to highlight that in year four and beyond, 25% of revenues from any third, in our case, third, but in other bigger cities' additional locations, after operational costs, would be diverted into the Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Account, an account that is administered by the state. What this new law does allow is that it does allow us here in Issaquah, given the fact that we already have a school zone safety program established, it does allow us the addition of one new location, that's important, location, number of cameras within that is, could be two, could be one, but one new location to our current program without any new revenue restrictions. However, regardless of new cameras that we would, that we would add, we would need to conduct an equity impact assessment on that location. As I mentioned in the packet.
I think we have another question.
Great.
Can you just talk a little bit about how revenues are distributed out of that Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Account? If we put money in, I'm going to presume we don't necessarily get money out, is that right?
I'm going to follow up on that for you. I don't know precisely, but my understanding and initial reading is that is not money that we would touch again.
Right, okay, thank you.
Let me just make a note.
I'll add a follow-on. Do we understand what putting that money into the Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Account would do to the profitability of the additional site?
We do, absolutely. Councilmember Martz, like you knew where I was going. So I did do an initial, additional analysis, so looking at what would be the impact of, we do add this third location, but in year four and beyond, we see a reduction after operating of 25% of those revenues. And so this chart on your screen or in your packet shows you a comparison between Grand Ridge as a site, as a location for a school zone without it being a third location, so that assumption could be made, it's a second location. And then you see, and you see also the scenario where it is a third location. So you see in 2028, a steep decline in revenues, what was already a tight net revenue scenario becomes even tighter. And so I think an important thing to see that it becomes, it's still just viable financially, becomes much potentially less viable. So the options that the administration considered, one was to maintain the current program. We have one school zone safety site on Second Avenue, continue to operate that program. The challenge was with this is that it does fail to address the confirmed dangerous driving that we now know for certain. Patrol pursuit is also quite dangerous, I believe Chief Schwan emphasized that when she presented in May, specifically in school areas, specifically on straightaways where people can speed quickly. And so we just know that that is not necessarily the safest option. A second option is to get, to add two locations, including a new program at Grand Ridge Elementary. Northeast Park Drive traffic, we know is going to be more, however, responsive to photo, to photo enforcement there, we believe, especially in the first three years, given that it is an internal road, a neighborhood road, more than pass-through traffic that's trying to beat congestion in our main downtown area. So we believe that the revenues will, or not the revenues, but that we will experience revenue decrease while also experiencing expenditure increase over time, challenging the fiscal viability of that particular site. Also, a third location, which would be necessary if we were to add two new locations, would be subject to new revenue restrictions, specifically in the fourth and the fifth year. Most speeding is happening outside of school zone hours, and I'll, I'll show some diagrams about that here in a moment.
Can I ask, do we not give tickets outside of school zone hours?
We do not, we only ticket when the cameras are flashing. The lights are flashing, excuse me, thank you.
Ah. Do we not, are, are cameras over by the high school? We don't give out tickets when the, when it's not flashing?
Only when flashing, only during school zone hours.
I did not know that. Thank you.
And potentially, we could station a single officer at Grand Ridge that could help with some of that enforcement. And the third option is to add one location to our current program at Issaquah Valley Elementary. I want to share a, go ahead, Councilmember.
Do we know how fast traffic is? We, we know the number of speeders that are occurring during school hours. Do we know how fast they're driving during school hours?
We do. And so I want to talk a little bit about the travel patterns, and you can also see, so in your packet, I believe it is Attachment C, you can see the analysis on the data collected by Vera Mobility at both school zone locations. In this green shaded version, the dark shaded are the potential violations during school zone hours. This is for Newport Way. I think it's important to emphasize that when traffic starts, it basically starts, and it, regardless of school zone hours, people are traveling at about the same speed all day long. That is slightly different than the pattern around Grand Ridge Elementary School. You can see, actually, during the school zone hours, on average, folks are driving at a lower rate of speed than during the non-school zone hours. Also, in your packet, you can see the speeding by speed. So in the top right-hand corner of each cam, potential camera direction, you can see the, the variance of speed. So for instance, it has on Issaquah Elementary, the first one, you can see that about over 5,000 of the folks driving through there were traveling under or between 16 and 20 miles an hour. And then your fastest speeders, you had three folks that were going upwards of 46 mile an hour, but it has it for each four mile an hour bucket. And so you can see that wrote, the data broken down that way as well.
Thank you.
So the proposal in front of you this evening, the administration is proposing adding a second school zone safety location within our current program, so not a new program, not subject to the new revenue restrictions of the new law, at Issaquah Valley Elementary on Newport Way Northwest. We're proposing adding a northbound and a southbound camera. This will help us remain within the terms of our current code, so no new revenue restrictions. It also will help us address the high incidence of ongoing speeding, so speeding throughout the day, regardless of whether or not the lights are flashing, but the fact that folks are maintaining that speed even when lights are flashing. And the high frequency of pass-through, rather than internal or neighborhood traffic, provides more, a more favorable financial viability over the required five-year lease term. The administration is recommending that the Services Safety and Parks Committee recommend the addition of one school zone safety location at Issaquah Valley Elementary School, and recommend that the mayor sign an amendment to the agreement with Vera Mobility to add two cameras at this location at Newport Way Northwest. The timing and next steps on this, if they were to move forward, would be first to conduct an equity impact assessment on the location. As mentioned in the packet, similar assessments have been done by neighboring jurisdictions, and we would imagine this would cost between $5,000 and $8,000. In December, we would finalize communication to the community, including outreach directly to any school, but also setting up more information about why school zone safety cameras, what are we hoping to, what are we hoping the impact of this camera will be, and why do we see it as a viable solution to solve this problem of safety in our school area? And also, in December, if we were to move forward, this would be when we would sign that contract amendment. And January and February is when the new cameras would be installed and the program would be launched. So the direction needed tonight, specifically, the administration is recommending, or excuse me, is requesting that you review the administration's proposal to add a new school speed zone camera location at Issaquah Valley Elementary School, and to provide direction on the administration's proposal to sign a contract amendment with Vera Mobility to install and operate two new cameras on Newport Way Northwest. And with that, I will pause for questions.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I had a question on the equity study that you just touched on. Would that equity study be the same study as required under HB 2384, or does it differ?
That is the same study.
Okay. And then follow-up question, it, the analysis indicates that the impact study needs to look at the placement of livability, accessibility, economics, education, and environmental health when identifying where to locate the automatic, automated traffic safety camera. Could you give a little bit more information about that if you could?
So then the great thing is that actually the vendor assessment has done a little bit of that work for us already. A great example, and I'm kicking myself for not including it in the packet this evening, Lake Forest Park recently did a similar study for their new traffic camera program. And so I can't speak exactly to the methodology, but that would be a good example of what you would see. A lot of the, the data is actually pretty similar, so it's around what is the current travel pattern there, what is the current incidence of speeding, what is the flow of foot traffic and bike traffic in that area as well, and trying to get a sense of who might be, if anyone, the word I'm looking for, who might be impacted unnecessarily by the installation of new cameras.
Okay, and I guess there could be a number of different parties that could be impacted when I was thinking about this. Are we concerned about equity in terms of the racial, socioeconomic breakdown of the people that are getting the tickets? Are we concerned about the equity impact to the people in the neighborhood, or the people going to and from school, as you point out, kind of walking to school? And I don't know if you have the answer to that, I was just curious as to how, what equity lens we are using and what equity point of view we were going to approach it from.
It would be people in the neighborhood and people going to and from school. There's not a great way on a pre-installation timeline for us to predict the demographics of people driving through the area.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Deputy Council President.
Thank you. So one of the things that isn't talked about here is, would, I'm presuming this would alleviate or relieve a traffic officer from patrolling Newport Way as often as they do now? Are there any potential savings that we would make through putting the cameras in? And that might be, I know that might be hard to document, because they probably are responding on a needs basis, but it seems to me that in some ways, we're going to save some money here in terms of officer presence on Newport Way. Is that correct?
I can't say that, that is correct. I do think what I would hope and assume would be true is that by not needing to be there, they could be elsewhere. I think in general, we have a need for officers in a number of places, so if we can alleviate their need to be there, that means they're able to be present in other parts of the community.
Okay, all right. That was my assumption, too. And the other, I also was interested in the equity study. Would we be looking at equity differences between Grand Ridge and Issaquah Valley Elementary? Would that be part of that equity study? Are we looking at, are more people of color, for example, impacted at Grand Ridge than at Issaquah Valley Elementary, or vice versa?
At, we would be just looking at the one location if we were going to move forward, specifically to understand the impacts on Newport Way, rather than comparing the two.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other question? And does that conclude your presentation for us this evening?
It does.
I'll ask the clerk whether we have anyone remote, have we, have we had anyone join us remotely who might potentially want to make public comment?
Chair Martz, we have not.
We have not, okay. So I guess now we can go into the direction needed section.
I will go first, thank you. Appreciate the staff presentation tonight, very thorough, and you were able to answer some of the curveball questions that Chairman Martz had for you. Appreciate that. I believe this is a good program to pursue and to complete the equity study. I had, I had kids who went to IV, and I often traveled the road myself and try to walk that road. The speeds during school hours are manageable, and when people slow down to 20 miles an hour, people speed during those times, it is a little bit scary. So I think this proposal is appropriate for public safety. I think that it's an appropriate direction for the administration to pursue. I would ask that they look into signing the contract amendment with the vendor Vera Matil, Vera Mobility, excuse me.
Deputy Council President. Deputy Counsel President.
Thanks. Well, first of all, yes, I would like to see us put a traffic camera along Newport Way. Again, I also travel that road frequently, and it can get dangerous out there if people are speeding. There's already a lot that we've done out there, but I think there could be more. And I think we talked way back when we first started looking at this, that we would revisit this when the traffic circles go in, and yeah, it's because that might have an impact on speed as well. So at some point, we might revisit this. My concern, and I told you earlier, I'm a little conflicted because we discovered through this process that Grand Ridge Elementary does have a problem. And I, when I'm looking at the speeding figures for after school, in that community, Grand Ridge is a public facility, and there's a lot of activities that are going on there after school. And so getting an extra officer out there, I think, to help that community, again, I brought this one up because I had heard over the years, many, many complaints about people speeding past that school in dangerous fashion, and especially when it's dark and rainy, it's really a dark road at that time. So I don't know what that, what that might mean, but I'm wondering if we can work with the school district to identify those large community gatherings at that school and see if we can get some extra enforcement out there during those periods of time. If we didn't have to sign a five-year contract, you know, it'd be fun to do a pilot for a year, but we can't do that, so just to see if it really made an impact. But since it's a five-year contract, I don't think we ought to obligate ourselves to that. So I do want the administration's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide that shows the impact of the revenues in the fourth and the fifth year going over to the fund? Yeah, I just totally think we should do both locations. They're both a problem. It seems very arbitrary to me to tackle one of the two. They're both, they're a comparable magnitude problem, it's a comparable number of speeders going past the two locations. It seems really bizarre to just choose one of the two and not do the other two. Clearly, the cameras at Grand Ridge would make enough money over the five years to cover the cost and a lot more than that. Even if in years four and five, it didn't make a lot of money, they would bring in a lot of money in the first three years, according to our projections. And so we have, we have facts and we have theories, right? The fact is that people are speeding at both of these locations a ton in front of where our kids go to school. There's a theory that we won't make a ton of money in years four and years five, but again, over the course of the contract, both will make a lot of money. And if you stand back and sort of squint, they're both going to make the same, you know, there's going to be same number of digits in the amount of money that we would make in both of these programs. And if we have to give some of the money back to the state, well, we do that in other programs as well. So I would really like to see us do both of these schools. They're an equal magnitude problem currently, and it would be a great problem to have at the end of year five. If we've, if we've caused a huge reduction in speeding in Grand Ridge and we're not making much money at the end of year five, then we can dismantle that, those cameras and declare victory. So I would, I would ask that my fellow committee members consider a recommendation of both locations. Councilmember Joe?
Yeah, I'll just ask, I'm not opposed to that, I just want to hear from staff to see if that would cause any delays or additional work that might need to be done and how that might impact the timeline.
Sure, I think one of the big concerns that I didn't go into in this presentation is staffing. So you see the numbers, the expenditure numbers around hiring enough people to administer this program. However, hiring enough people to administer two school zone cameras may be a challenge. You're looking at that point, at the addition of upwards of potentially five court staff and potentially even, in some cases, at least at the beginning, maybe up to eight police officers. And so that could be, that I think is probably the biggest barrier, is potentially the ability to staff the response to the violations that we would see if we were to install both at the same time.
Well, now I'm confused because these are net revenues. I assumed they were the revenue after covering the costs associated with the programs.
Not, not an issue of cost, an issue of hiring. So not an issue, actually not an issue of, we would have the dollars to pay for the people, it would be the issue of bringing that many new staff members on here between now and the end of January, when we would hope to launch the first camera. So we're looking at maybe two court and four police right now for one, and we look upwards of potentially double that. That would just be, that would be the barrier, not the, not the dollars, but the human, human capital.
All right, but I mean, this has been a problem evidently for a while, and if it takes us a little while to staff up, take this little while to staff up. The other thing I would, I would mention in consideration in both of these is I do not like the idea of saying, well, we can just put an officer up there so we don't need these cameras. Every single officer we have is vital, right, to the city and is hard-won, right? And every uniformed officer that we have that's out there on patrol, we need on patrol, stacked up when we could solve the problem with robotics. We are told time and time again how vital are our very small police. Councilmember DeMichele, Deputy Counsel President.
Just to note that the cameras won't be working after school hits out. So even if we did this extra program, it's going to stop at 5:00, is it, on Second Avenue? So that wouldn't solve the problem of the extra speeders in the evening. We'd still need an officer up there, I think, so. Or, now, I thought about, do we start the cameras a little bit later and let them go a little bit later? That might be another option, but we'd still need, if it was during the regular school hours, we're still going to need an officer up there. I will say that point well taken by your comments. This is going to go back to the full council, right? So I think maybe it goes back to the full council with a split decision and we re-discuss it at that point.
If that's the will of the body, then that'll be the will of the body. So I take it both of you still would like to just have the cameras on Newport and not at Grand Ridge?
I think the recommendation is to go back with a split decision, as Councilmember DeMichele points out, that the location on Newport is, it sounds like it has three votes. And then the other camera is a recommendation for full council consideration with no decisive 2-1 or 3-0.
I think 2-1 reflects the sense of the body. Two of the council members would like to have the program in front of Issaquah Valley Elementary, and one of the three would like to have it in front of both elementary. Very well.
Sounds good.
Does the administration have what they're looking for from us this evening? All right.
Thank you.
Dale, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Do my fellow committee members have anything else for the committee at this time? All right, well, I have no announcements to make, so with that, we are adjourned at 7:08. Thank you all very much, thank you at home.